Come back to public session. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Hughes. We're back at 7:23. Agenda questions, please. Leave your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you're asked to leave your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you're here representing the group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you're here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you're referring to in your question. I have a motion to open to the public. Mr. Hughes, second by Mr. Copeland. We're open at 7:24. Seeing no one, may I have a motion? Mr. Kuzmarski, second by Mr. Gallo. We are closed at 7:24 and 12 seconds. Ms. Marchetti, we're going to put you right up front so you can give us your report first.
Thank you. Okay, so first, our Action Through Athletics Club hosted the Hoops for Marcus game on the 18th and then raised $4,200. And our Habitat for Humanity club started their Snow Angels program for the year where they shoveled people's driveways and they raised $260 so far. Interact is going to be selling candy grams and the money that they raise is going towards the Marcus Cale Scholarship Fund. And then our high school started participating in the North Jersey Student of the Week, so staff will be nominated students based on their involvement in co-curricular clubs and activities. We're doing the Hearts for Marcus cardiac screenings in the beginning of February and our goal is to screen 120 high school kids. And then our winter sports are doing well, in particular, girls' basketball, bowling, and then winter track and field. And our Winter Guard has their first show this weekend at West Orange High School. And then we're having an assembly on January 31st called Always Connected, which is about education and awareness in terms of appropriate use of social media. And then that same night, there'll be a parent presentation, so if they can go and do that assembly as well. And then we had a really good international night, which happened last week. And on February 3rd, in support of Class of 2024 Project Graduation, Harlem Wizards will be at Ramapo Graduate School at six, playing with teachers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Montoro, what do you have for us today?
Let me ask the Dr. Vinos, would you like to start or end my reports?
Sure, I'll start.
All right. So we have a presentation. This is specific, this is state mandate that we report out on NJGPA. Dr. Vinos is going to be giving a brief presentation to the board.
Okay, good evening. So you might be wondering why we're talking about NJGPA again. You saw a similar presentation in the fall. So what happened was, we always have NJGPA reporting out with NYSLA and SATs and all of that. But this year, the state wants us to also report out on anybody who took the NJGPA in the fall. So that's what this is. Okay? So a lot of these slides you've seen before. The NJGPA is the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. It's given to all grade 11 students. It's tests ELA and math. And you can look at the bottom there to see when exactly the pieces are that are tested. In terms of changes that happen, so when it originally came out, the original mandate was that all students had to take the assessment. In May of 2023, were some changes. So one of the changes was that the cut score change. Remember, we were talking about this, it went from 750 to 725, right? The other thing that changed were, if you recall, the ASVAB. Do you remember that assessment? The ASVAB was also taken out as an option for an alternative assessment. So this is just the information of the changes. You're going to start to see things talking about pathways. So to graduate, you can either do the NJGPA or an alternate pathway. So if you didn't take, if you didn't pass the NJGPA in the fall or the spring, then you could take an alternate assessment. So the ACT, the SAT, they're all listed there. That's called Pathway Two. There's a Pathway Three, that if you didn't pass either the NJGPA or the Alternative Assessment, you could also do a portfolio appeal. So when we report out on small amounts of students, this is something we can't report out for under 10, right? So we always talk about that when we do our normal testing presentations. So when you look at the next slide, I'll show you the amount of students that actually took it in the fall and what we're reporting on. But just remember, you have to go through one of the pathways in order to graduate. And something that I want to point out is that the bottom asterisk there, all of the students who started with us in September of 2023, all graduated meeting a requirement that we put forward. So this is the information in combination from the spring results and the fall results. So the top shows you the participation of students who took the test in the spring. And then the bottom section, we're taking 10 out of 22 and 20 out of 37. Those are the math students that took it in the fall. So if you took the NJGPA and passed it in the spring, you did not have to do anything else. You were given the option to take the NJGPA in the fall if you had not passed in either math or ELA. So we had 10 students that took us up on that and 20 students who, I'm sorry, 22 students and 37 students who took us up on that offer to retake the NJGPA. 10 students actually sat and 20 students sat for math, the 10 students for ELA. Since the number's so small, we can't report out exactly now who passed and who didn't pass. But what you'll see at the bottom is the breakdown of pathways for graduation. So NJGPA, in total, you'll see the March score, passing rate. You'll see the October score of passing rate. And then you'll see the total. So out of all students who are graduating in this coming June, 92% of our students passed the NJGPA in ELA. And we had 86% pass the NJGPA for math. Now, what happens? We have a second pathway. So if you didn't pass one of those, you could take an alternate assessment. PSAT, SAT, ACT, and AccuPlaceR. Again, ASVAB was taken out. We had 10% of our students passing in English and 12% in mathematics using an alternate assessment. For those that are counting or looking for that 100%, it's not way too add up. It looks like we're, you know, we have 110%, you know, percent of our students. So the reason why is because we have students that either move in or move out from spring to fall. So you're having different actual base number. The other thing to keep in mind is that some students actually will take this as a, like, almost safety net, but then they ended up passing the NJGPA too. If you look at Pathway Three, we have no students that need to take Pathway Four, Pathway Three for ELA for the portfolio assessment, but we did have 5% of our students that had to do it for math. And I can't tell you whether they are all going to graduate. My hope is that they will. The reason why is because those 5% were still in portfolio appeal. So we'll get those answers pretty soon. For disaggregated data, normally here we talk about different subgroups. We cannot do that with this information because it would go under our number of 10. Does anyone have questions on this specific page?
So Pathway Two, the PSAT, SAT, ACT, is there a minimum score that they have to?
Yes, so each test has its own cut score that they have to hit. So it'll be different, right? As I said, the NJGPA was a 750, then we went to the 725 this year, we talked about that. It's similar in those other tests, they all have their own proficiency cut scores in order for graduation. Any other questions on this? These last two slides are, they're the same that you saw in the fall. So it's ELA and math, what we do for students that if they didn't pass the NJGPA in the spring, what we would do for them in the fall, and then all the scores that we put in place. The biggest thing here is that, and Mr. Pascal will tell you this if he was standing here, regardless of what's on this page, we're going to support our students, no matter what. So we want all of our students to pass along a pathway. We all want them to graduate, and we've been successful in doing that with our kids. So I do want to thank Mr. Pascal, he left already, but Mr. Pascal, the administration, and obviously the teachers who work one-on-one with some of our students in order to have them pass that AccuPlaceR in the summer or an alternate assessment or through portfolio assessments. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple things that I definitely want to share with the board and the community. I feel like it's becoming a trend, which I appreciate. We return back to our focus of Thunder Partnership. I'm happy to report that Dr. Fair, myself, Mr. Pascal, went to Ramapo College this week. We were able to meet with Dean Goldstein, the new head of School for, School of Contemporary Arts at Ramapo College, as well as Professor Laporte, who made the contact. Professor Laporte is a parent in town. She's wonderful along the lines of supporting our district, so she was able to make the contact for us. We sat down with Dean Goldstein and he was very excited about the opportunities of continuing our partnership with Ramapo College. Some of the things we talked about were the partnership K through 12 and the experiences of bringing in either students or professors from the college into our schools in a number of different capacities. He also spoke to us about specific experiences that we can invite not only our students but our community to. One being the Animation and VFX Conference, which is in February. There's going to be presentations for our students and the community, and there's also going to be workshops that they can take advantage of that Mr. Pascal is going to be working with the teachers to communicate that to our students. He spoke about the opportunities for gallery openings, not only at the college, but also here in Mawa. We spoke about opportunities for our students to be able to showcase their work at Ramapo College. We also spoke about having possible internships with the professors there along the lines of providing content for various coursework, and Mr. Pascal was definitely interested in pursuing that. We also spoke about having some professors giving feedback to some of our students on portfolio reviews. A number of our students provide portfolios to colleges to gain credit for specific courses. And we finally spoke about providing Dean Goldstein our course of studies in the Visual Performing Arts categories that we can connect with them to create dual enrollment, add to our dual enrollment offering. So we left very encouraged. We also know that, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, but there are a lot of actionable things that we can start on this spring that we can find come to fruition either in the summer or in the fall of '24, '25. So it was exciting to maximize the experience of, we have a college right in our backyard. So as you all know, we met with Dr. Jep, I believe it was last year. Now we're meeting with Dr. Goldstein, and I know we also have connections with Dr. Romano, who's also working on dual enrollment opportunities. So our focus is really to make sure, not only are we creating Thunder Partnerships for K-12 classrooms, but we've been really committed to making sure that while our kids are here, if we can get them college experiences, college credits, things like that, we want to build that type of experience up so when they leave here, it's our hope that they leave with a pocket full of credits that's going to offset that financial burden once they do go to the college level. So that was something we wanted to celebrate. Speaking of celebrating, I've tried to make it a point to spotlight our sports programs because our sports programs are definitely a point of pride for us, and I'm happy to report that our Mawa High School girls, as Gabby shared, continue to roll with an 11 and 3 record. Counties are right around the corner, and I ask everyone to go out and support all of our teams. And the board was supportive enough to allow us to have middle school sports. Just to remind you, our soccer team in their first year won the championships. Our basketball team last year went to the championships. And our current basketball teams, our boys are 9-0, and our girls are 8-1. So this is a big week for our middle school sports basketball programs as they come to the end of the season and begin the playoffs. Performing arts, to be honest, I think it's best if you continue to follow Twitter for Mawa High School because there are celebrations across all of our performing arts, whether it's chorus, whether it's band, whether it's our orchestra. There are county and state recognitions, to name a few. The next piece, sticking on the positives. The next piece is Mawa Schools Foundation opened their grant cycle. I just want to say yet again how grateful we are for the support that they have provided to our district. For the 13 years I've been here and well before that, every single year, Dr. Fair and I meet with their committee and they are open to so many different ideas that push our district further, and they've been key in providing resources to our district to make sure that our offerings are at a high level. So thank you so much for the Mawa Schools Foundation. We have northjersey.com. I asked everyone to log in. I believe Mr. Pascal tweeted this as well. We have two students who are up for student of the week. There are teams of the week, there are athletes of the week, this is student of the week. And they need, we need, they need our help and support. This award seeks to highlight academic achievement, extracurricular activities, volunteerism, and other pursuits that are part of the lives of so many of our young scholars. There are two students, Hannah Pauley, who's a junior, and David Kobabel, who is a senior. So please log on to northjersey.com, student of the week, and vote for our students. Something that's not as exciting, but I want to make sure that you guys are aware of it, and I think the community needs to be aware of it as well. At your table, you'll see a voluminous document that speaks to New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum User Guide. The New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum is the Department of Education's Monitoring and District Self-Evaluation System for public school districts. The system shifts the monitoring and evaluation focus from compliance to assistance, capacity building, and improvement. It is a single comprehensive accountability system that consolidates and incorporates the monitoring requirements of applicable state laws and programs and complements federally required improvements. The system focuses on monitoring and evaluating school districts in five key components that, based on research, have been identified to be key factors in effective school districts. These components are construction and program, fiscal, governance, operations, and personnel. I think it's important for us, I wanted to share this with you because this is something that we've been working on for over a year. If you take a look at this document, this shares, or this details, all of the things that they look for along the lines of our compliance. They not only look for it, we have to provide samples and artifacts and proof that we are aligning to their expectations. To share with you what this experience is, there's a remote monitoring experience, then there's an onsite monitoring experience. Most recently, we went through and completed fiscal, governance, operations, and personnel in the last couple weeks. Instruction and program has been postponed by the county until I believe it's April 23rd. We will be getting our scores back from this audit, for lack of a better word. I'm hoping prior to the end of the school year, I can't make that promise because it's out of our hands at this point. Whenever we get that back, we can report out on how we are doing. What I can share with you very informally, and before we give scores in hand, the first four indicators went well. They came onsite, we provided all of the things that we needed, we talked through how we are navigating specific components. The county interim superintendent came, as well as the director of special education at the county level, I think his title is. So that was a lift, to say the least, but it is my hope that they were able to see how we are functioning as a district, and I'm hoping that we're able to report back in June or whenever they give us the reports, what our scores are. So I just wanted to give everyone here and in the community an awareness of what's happening behind the closed doors that you really don't get a chance to see at the community level. Thank you.
We're going to use a copy that and take a couple minutes and look through it because some of the stuff that, you know, it goes into a lot of minutia. There's a lot of detail here and the amount of work to compile all this stuff and to go through, not just the, you know, the remote part, where, you know, the remote part is putting stuff together and sending all of this stuff to be evaluated, and then they come and they go through the buildings and they go through, you know, I mean, this is, this is, this document is a huge amount of work that these guys have put together. So I think that's awesome and look forward to positive results because if we get positive results, then they leave us alone for...
At least five years.
Five years?
Exactly.
Yeah.
I think it is.
I think that takes a spirit. Yeah, so.
Well, I was hoping for five.
Probably, we gotta wait. If we do well enough, maybe we'll wait.
There we go. Okay, Mr. Bleak, what's you got?
A handful of items tonight. First thing I just wanted to say, since our last meeting a couple weeks ago, we've had two, maybe three delayed openings and one early dismissal. Big thanks to our Buildings and Grounds Department, as well as everybody at Township DPW for helping keep our roads safe for our buses, for working with us, working on those early dismissals and delayed openings. Big credit and thanks to them for their work so far. We're certainly not out in the woods yet, so we've got a lot of woods are left, but thanks to everyone for their support and help with clearing the roads, making it safe for buses, for students, or for parents to transport kids to and from school. Next, I just have a couple of housekeeping items. The first one are two resolutions that will be added to tonight's agenda. When we add a resolution to the agenda, we do read them in full, so just bear with me while I read these two agenda items in full. We're going to add them to the end of the new business section of our agenda, so this is going to be, the first one's going to be new business item 18T. And the resolution reads, resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education continues the suspension of student ID 39502. While she completes her education online through Egisir Virtual Education, contingent upon her being domiciled in the Mawa School District, and, be it further resolved, that she must be assessed her treatment at a certified drug and alcohol treatment facility that is approved by the student, assistant counselor, or designated and complete the recommended course of treatment, along with providing proof of seeing, and, be it further resolved, that if the student fails to regularly attend and complete the expected progress benchmarks before her schooling through Egisir, she will be disenrolled from the Mawa School District after a prior notice and being issued a final warning, and, be it further resolved, that the people shall not be permitted on school property or to attend any school-sponsored events or activities, and, be it finally resolved, that the decision upon the student's participation in graduation exercises will be based upon successful completion of her academic program. They'll be added to the agenda as item 18T. The other resolution to be added is, will be agenda item 18U. This resolution reads, resolved upon the recommendation superintendent, the Board of Education continues the suspension of student ID 39605. While on home instruction pending her enrollment and completion of a minimum of two treatment sessions at a certified drug and alcohol treatment facility that is approved by the student, assistant counselor, or designated and provides proof of seeing, and, be it further resolved, that upon her return to school district environment, the student shall be evaluated for therapeutic services provided by the Effective School Solution ESS program at Mawa High School, and, be it further resolved, that if the student, one, fails to regularly attend or complete the treatment program at the drug and alcohol facility, or, two, does not regularly attend home instruction, or, three, commits any other disciplinary infraction, to warrant a suspension, will result in an expulsion hearing before the Board or Committee thereof to discontinue educational services, and, be it finally resolved, that the people shall not be permitted on school property or to attend any school-sponsored events or activities during the suspension period. That resolution will be an 18U. With those two resolutions being added, I also want to share that there is one resolution on the agenda that will be tabled to a future board meeting. That is agenda item 18R, an amendment between the Board of Education and the Mawa Education Association. That agenda item will be tabled to a future board meeting. And the very last piece of housekeeping I have is for members of the public to be aware and for board members, we've already communicated with, that our next regularly scheduled board meeting, which had been scheduled for Wednesday, February 21st, is going to be canceled. That will be replaced with a board meeting that is going to be on Thursday evening, February 15th. Notices have already been sent to paper, as well as the town clerk and school offices regarding these changes, and also posted for our website. Those are the items I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bleak. Here, Dr. Fair, please.
I have a few items to report on. The first piece, some good news for Mawa High School. We were just contacted by College Board, in particular their Advanced Placement Program. Mawa High School has earned an award from the College Board, AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award. This achievement was earned for our high female representation in our AP Computer Science Principles course. In 2023, Mawa High School is one of 834 high schools recognized across the country in the category of AP Computer Science Principals for this distinction in enrollment. Yeah, it's really awesome. As I was reading the agenda, and since we're talking about AP, I also want to congratulate Ms. Beyond, Ms. Kranek, and Ms. Morlick, who will be serving as AP readers for AP Chinese and Culture, AP English Literature and Composition, and AP Music Theory. I know as a former AP reader, it's an awesome experience and it could certainly catapult instruction as a result of that experience. So I wish them an awesome time in June. The next piece at your places is a flyer slash invitation for tomorrow evening from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM, where the high school work-based learning coordinators, our guidance department, and the leadership team have organized an event where light refreshments will be set up, and overview presentation of students' work related to their work placements will take place, and ultimately, this evening will be used to thank and honor our mentors and work-based placements. So I know that we've been talking a lot about this, and it's great to see something like this come to fruition. So this will also serve, obviously, as a showcase of our students' experiences from their respective internships and externship experiences. And lastly, another bright spot at your places is an article from Columbia University's website. The title is "A Rare Story of Hope in Pancreatic Cancer Treatment." This is connected to a Mawa High School graduate. The article is about a patient who entered a laboratory for pre-clinical research first conducted by Columbia University oncologist. The laboratory is led by Kenneth Olive, PhD, who was a 1994 graduate of Mawa High School.
1994.
So his leadership related to this laboratory was featured, and I also believe his father was a former Mawa board member, which is really cool. So the article highlights the unique comprehensive facility that is Columbia's Pancreas Center as they are working hard to offer the world new possibilities and hope for a cure for this deadly disease. According to the article, although for the better part of 40 to 50 years, the only treatment for pancreatic cancer has been surgery and old-school chemo treatment, which has often been a disease that has been defiant when responding to new therapies. Fortunately, due to this recent lapse findings, they're making progress towards identifying new therapies that will change the outcome of this devastating and aggressive disease. So shout out to another Mawa High School graduate with whom we are proud of their contributions to the field of science, medicine, and the world. So, great report.
How did you become aware of this?
Mr. Pascal, so whenever there's like good news, he, you know, he spreads the good word. So he sent that to my email.
How did he get it?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, he's interconnected. Very interconnected.
He probably called science and they came back.
Oh, of course.
Yes, yes. In his email, he said Ken was a bright student, a bright science student. Obviously, he went to Bucknell and then he went to MIT to earn his PhD.
A slacker.
Yeah, right? But if you do get the opportunity to check out this article online, the video, there's a YouTube video connected or embedded in the article. there's, there's a YouTube video, video connected or embedded in the article, which is, it really brings the contents of the article to life as well, so. Yeah. Thank you.
And having, having grown up with Ken, this is not a surprise. I do get to talk to him periodically. He, if I see him on, you know, on other things, and he is a super interesting guy to talk to. But it's, this is, this is, his lab does a lot of good work, has for years, and this is really, I mean, this is, this is his passion. He's, you know, to talk to him about it is, is super interesting.
I have emailed him so that he can connect with our students, so once I get a response, yes, we will make it work.
I might be able to help out.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna channel my inner Dr. Morty here. Actually, I'm not. I'm gonna be quick. So, Doc.
Lots of water.
All right, so Dr. Morty did leave a report tonight. Just very briefly, that since the last meeting, she was able to put together our committee assignments. I'd like to report that our committee assignments have been completed for the year. Thank you to all board members for their prompt replies and cooperation in completing this process. The five standing committees and one ad hoc committee. For each committee, there's a chairperson and three board members. The chairpeople are Mike Gallo for negotiations, also Mike Gallo for finance and facilities, Dr. Morty for curriculum and instruction, Ms. Davinero for community relations, Mr. Denise for policy, and Mr. Copeland for the ad hoc transportation committee. We also have assigned liaisons and alternates for Mawa Access for All, Mawa Schools Foundation, Mawa Town Council, Bergen County School Boards Association, and NJ SBA Legislative. Every committee meets on a regular basis during the year, each month or as needed. Minutes from each committee meeting are shared to the full board, and committee reports at board meetings are an opportunity for updates to be provided to board and the public regarding what's taking place on each committee. That's Dr. Morty's report. Committee reports. Oh, I'm sorry. So we have, so tonight we have, Mr. Ziddermer is here to conduct our annual ethics training, which we have to do every year to make sure we're working with my supportive part of CUSAC, right? So, Mr. Ziddermer, it's all your...
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Members of the board, members of the administration, members of the community. Thank you for having me here this evening to discuss the New Jersey School Ethics Act. The School Ethics Act is a law in the state of New Jersey that governs the conduct of certain school officials, and I'll explain how the term "school official" is defined in the act. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The preamble to the School Ethics Act really sums up nicely why New Jersey has a School Ethics Act in the first place. And as you can tell, the theme is that the taxpayers, the folks who elected you to serve, have to feel confident that you're acting in the best interests of the school community and the students, rather than for your own personal interests, financial interests, the interests of family, friends, businesses in which you may be associated. And what it says is that in our representative form of government, it's essential that conduct of members of local boards of education and local administrators hold the respect and the confidence of the people. The officials must avoid conduct which is in violation of the public trust or which creates unjustifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated. So what does that mean? It means not only do you have to avoid actual conflicts of interest, but you also have to avoid the appearance of impropriety. I always tell board members, if something doesn't pass the smell test, if somebody's going to question, is this decision being driven by a board member, again, for their own interests, their own personal interests, or for the interests of the school district, which is the reason they should be acting, then the board member needs to take a step back. And I always advise board members err on the side of caution, recuse yourself, literally step away from the discussion, don't vote, and so forth. So New Jersey does require that we annually discuss this. We talked about CUSAC before. I think this falls into the governance category. We'll be able to check that box. Who does the act apply to? It applies to school officials, board members, of course, but it also applies to school administrators, high-level school administrators, assistant superintendents, of course, the superintendent, BAs, and principals. The Code of Ethics within the School Ethics Act only applies to the conduct of Board of Education members. And so if you look at the School Ethics Act, it's essentially divided into two parts. You have the Prohibited Acts, which deal with conflicts and avoiding conflicts, and then you have the Code of Ethics, which I'm going to discuss now. Just briefly walk you through them. Board members are responsible for following the law, upholding the law. That's what Section A refers to. Section B is that you're to make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of all children. You're here for everybody, regardless of race, color, religion, creed, et cetera. Section C really defines what it is to be a board member. A board is really a policy-making body. You set policy for the district. You set policy, we use Strauss ESME, they kind of provide us with the frameworks, the templates, but then we have the ability as board members to kind of shape those policies to fit the needs of our district. A lot of policy is contained in statute, regulations, so you don't have a lot of discretion, but there are areas where you do have discretion, again, shape the policies to fit the needs of the school district. Planning for the future of the district and appraisal, taking a step back and saying, how are we doing? What can we do better? And so forth. And framing those plans after you have consulted with them. And what they mean by that is doing that through your work on the various committees, not privately. Section D is an area where board members sometimes get themselves into trouble if you read the decisions of the School Ethics Commission. Your job, like I said, as a board member is not to run the school, but to make sure it is well-run. You have the administration running the day-to-day operations of the school district. And if you read the code, it talks about what does somebody have to prove to show a violation of that particular provision and all the others, but I'll highlight a few for the administration. To show somebody violated that, you have to show that somebody gave a direct order to school personnel or became directly involved in the day-to-day operations of the school district. And so if you go to the School Ethics Commission website, you'll see all their decisions, and here's an example of a board member, for instance, getting involved into the day-to-day. So the SEC, referring to the School Ethics Commission, found a violation where a board member showed up at the guidance department office, started asking the secretaries to produce SAT reports for him, then proceeds down to the school gymnasium where he inspects the locker room, does his own inspection, and then he starts telling the PE teachers how they should do a better job supervising the gym class that day. Somebody got wind of this, filed an ethics complaint, and clearly this was found to have been a clear violation of administering the school. A big no-no. Section E, you have to recognize your authority rests with the board, and you're not allowed to take, make personal promises or take private action that could compromise the board. You have the ability to act when you're here at the dais through your various committees, but once you leave this room, you do not have authority to bind the board, to act on behalf of the board, or quite frankly, even speak on behalf of the board unless you've been authorized by the board to do so. Section F says you're supposed to refuse to surrender your independent judgment to special interest groups, partisan political groups, or to use the schools for the gain of friends or for yourself. Surrender your independent judgment is the key in that. Does that mean you can't advocate for a particular group of students? No, of course not. The buzzwords are surrendering your judgment so that you're no longer independent about the way you're thinking about the issue. Confidentiality. Board members, as you know, come across a lot of confidential information in the course of their duties as board members. Confidential student information, confidential personnel information, litigation issues, and so forth. We're allowed, as you know, to discuss those topics in executive session. The superintendent will often communicate you, with you about confidential matters. And I always tell my school district clients that if the Board of Education as a whole doesn't feel confident that what is said in closed session, is discussed in closed session, stays in closed session, it really undermines your ability to be an effective body because nobody's going to want to have an open, honest dialogue or debate about anything for fear that as soon as the meeting's over, and this happens unfortunately, everybody in the community knows what was said, you said this, you said that, and it completely undermines everything on top of the fact that it's a very clear ethics violation. So I really want to stress to everybody how important confidentiality is and that your spouses and your friends and your significant others, they are not bound by the ethics. So you should not be going home and telling them the things that you talked about here because that's how things, quite frankly, get out into the community. It's a real problem. And then the other part of that is you have to provide accurate information. So you're allowed to, you're allowed to surrender your First Amendment rights, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute as a board member, but it's important that when you talk about things pertaining to the Mawa School District, that you're accurate in what you say. Section H, voting to appoint the best qualified personnel after considering the recommendation of the superintendent. By law, the superintendent makes all personnel recommendations in the district. The board can't appoint somebody without Dr. Toro's recommendation. There's another section of Title eighteen A that says the board actually shouldn't withhold its approval of the superintendent's recommendations for arbitrary and capricious reasons. Does that mean you have to rubber stamp everything that comes by? No, but unless you have a very good, solid, reasonable reason, you're generally, as a rule, supposed to support all of the personnel recommendations that come before you from the superintendent. Next, we will support and protect school personnel and the proper performance of their duties. So what does that mean? If somebody's going to show somebody violated this, what do they have to show? That somebody took deliberate action which resulted in undermining, opposing, or compromising, or harming school personnel, the proper performance of their duties. Read some of the cases from the Ethics Commission. Or publicly criticizing or evaluating particular staff members. Obviously, that is not supporting and protecting school personnel and the performance of their duties. And if I'm going too fast, please let me know, chiming, questions, concerns, whatever. Section J, I like this section. I think this is a good section for board members. This section is the section of the School Ethics Act that says, if a complaint comes across your desk, so to speak, refer that to the superintendent of schools to handle. You should not be handling complaints from community members on your own. It's a, it's a great ability to punt when you're at the local supermarket and somebody comes up to you and says, my kid's teacher is giving too much homework. You're on the board, what are you going to do about it? The answer is I'm going to go talk to Dr. Totoro, he'll get back to you, he'll take care of it. Or you can certainly refer them to the chain of command. Have you spoken to your child's teacher? Did you go to the principal? Et cetera, et cetera. The point is you should not be dealing with these complaints on your own as a Board of Education member. So if somebody feels that somebody's violating any of the things that I've talked about, can anybody file a complaint? And the answer is yes, anybody, anybody in the community, anybody on the board can file a complaint. The Board of Education as an entity cannot file a complaint against one of its members, but the board members individually could sign on to a complaint. There's also a six-month statute limitation, that means the complaint has to be filed within six months of the time of the alleged offense. The School Ethics Commission is the only entity that can determine whether our conduct, whether our board member's conduct violated the act. I can certainly give you my legal opinion, but at the end of the day, the SEC's decision is the only one that's binding. We can request an advisory opinion from the School Ethics Commission, so if you want to know about a particular course of action and how to handle it, they will issue a written opinion to you on how to conduct yourself. I've only had to do that in a few situations. I represent a district in Somerset County where a senior student got elected to the Board of Education. In his senior year, he got elected to the Board of Education. And the board turned to me and said, Mark, you know, what can he vote on? Can he vote on his teachers? Can he vote on other student matters? He's a student in the high school and a board member. And I scratched my head and I said, this is one of those cases where I think we should write to the School Ethics Commission and get an advisory opinion. And they gave us a very detailed response, asking on the do's and don'ts of what that member could do. It was helpful. What are the sanctions for violating the act? At the lightest end of the spectrum, you have a reprimand, that's kind of a slap on the wrist in the form of a letter from the School Ethics Commission to the member. A censure is a resolution similar to what Kyle read, a very detailed resolution, read publicly at a meeting about the member's conduct. Certainly embarrassing, it usually makes the headlines, we have to post it on the place where we post notices. Not a good thing, obviously. Suspension, pretty self-explanatory, and then in the most extreme cases, removal from the Board of Education. Can you file an ethics complaint against somebody if they're no longer on the board? What do you think?
Within six months.
There you go. As long as it's within the six-month window of time, even if they're not on the board anymore. Suspension and removal is obviously not going to be an option, but yes, the answer is yes. I talked a little bit about this before. You don't surrender your First Amendment rights by being Board of Education member, but there's certain caveats. You have to make sure you're disclosing accurate information. You can't disclose confidential information or information which has the potential to compromise the board. You shouldn't publicly criticize your staff and so forth. I also refer you to Board Policy oh-one-four-six and oh-one-six-nine, which says that if you're going to make a speech in an organization, if you're going to write a letter to the papers, if you're somebody who likes to post on social media or Twitter or X, whatever you like to use, it's important that if you're speaking about Mawa School District issues, you have a disclaimer and you make it very clear that you're speaking as an individual and not on behalf of the Board of Education. You're speaking as a private citizen. And the School Ethics Commission recommends the following disclaimer. If anybody wants me to email it to you, if you're somebody who likes to do these things, I'm happy to email you this verbiage, but the gist of it is you have to say the following statements were made in my capacity as a private citizen and not in my capacity as a board member. These statements are also not representative of the board or its individual members and solely represent my individual personal opinions. So that's what you need to say on any postings, speeches, letters, and so on and so forth. So every year, I like to kind of pull some interesting cases from the New Jersey School Ethics Commission. These are all available, by the way, on the Department of Education's website under the School Ethics Commission tab. They're all public decisions, which is another reason why you don't want to be the subject of an ethics complaint. And so let me get your thoughts on some of these. It's actually a district that I represent, number one. So in this particular case, we have a board member who's a member of UNICO. I don't know if you're familiar with UNICO, it's the Italian-American organization. She's a member of UNICO. This board member is very upset because she learns that the school chorus is not performing at the UNICO Columbus Day event. And she decides that she's going to call the teacher, the head of the chorus, and say, hey, why aren't you guys performing this year? She emails her, she texts her. The teacher's in a very awkward spot, said, look, the principal didn't want us there. The board member essentially, he tells the teacher, well, the principal doesn't know what he's doing, it's ridiculous, he should, the guy should be here. And somebody got very upset with this board member and filed an ethics charge against her. So true or false, do you think this was a violation of Section D, which is not administering the schools, and Section E, which is recognizing your authority rests with the board and not making personal promises or taking private action that could compromise the board? What do you think? True or false?
True.
True. All right, well, one for one.
Can I ask a follow-up? What if the individual emailing, the board member emailing from your personal email address because your child's a member of the band?
The disclaimer.
I think, you know, look, you don't surrender your rights as a parent either. So if you're simply writing to the teacher as a parent, asking that question, I think it would be fair and I would probably, to your point, want some language in there saying something like, I'm emailing you as Jessica's mother because I'm, want to know, in the past, you guys have performed Jessica's set. So yes, as long as you made that very clear, that did not happen here.
Well, I always let my wife know.
Yeah. By the way, all these decisions, you know, keep in mind, I'm boiling down, some of these decisions are twenty, thirty pages long. I'm boiling them down to like a paragraph. So, but the point is, if you want to learn more about what happened, certainly feel free to read the cases. How about this one? This deals with the prohibited act, the conflict section. So a board member violated Section B and C of the act dealing with, I'm sorry, that's the code, that's on B, I thought. Big B is making decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and Section C is infining your board action to policy-making, planning, appraisal, and not engaging in conflicts. When she attended an executive session of the board while her husband's candidate was discussed, so this board member's husband is applying for an open seat on the Board of Education. The board discusses the candidates in closed session, and she attends the closed session while all the candidates, including her husband, are discussed. Do you think that was a problem?
Yes.
Absolutely. Do you want to say something?
For an appointment or?
Yes, for an open seat on the board.
Okay.
So if they have a vacancy, they advertise, they propose...
I thought it was for, for elections, like, why are they talking about that? They take a decision.
No, that was for a resignation on the board. So, yeah, and the School Ethics Commission said, look, she, she had undue privilege or advantage. She was a board member. What, that was the only reason she was allowed to sit in, and no other spouse of any other candidate got to sit in on the executive session discussions, and so that was a violation. How about this one?
It flowed out.
Yeah. So a board member violated Sections E and G. E is recognizing your authority rests with the board, not making personal promises or taking private action. G deals with confidentiality. So the board member gets an email from the superintendent of school saying, hey, good E is recognizing your authority rests with the board, not making personal promises or taking private action. G deals with confidentiality. So, the board member gets an email from the superintendent of schools saying, hey, good news, everybody, the NFL may be using our stadium for a big event, I just want to let you know this, and so forth. The board member then takes that email and forwards it to the mayor and the town council. The superintendent made clear that this was not a public matter, no decision had been made. Do you think that's a problem?
Yes.
Yes, of course. Board members have to maintain confidentiality, the matter was still under deliberation by the board. How about this one? This comes on the lot. A board member who's a teacher in another district and a member of the NJA can participate in negotiations with the teachers in the district who's a member, once there's a MOA with salary guides. What do you think, true or false? Can you, as a teacher in another district, participate in negotiations in your own district where you're a board member, once there's an MOA with guides?
False.
Anybody think it's true?
So, maybe what's, so, unless there's an MOA in salary guides, the negotiations are largely done.
Pretty much.
But not approved by the board yet.
Not formally approved, you're at the correct, like, the one yard line. So now it's just a matter of putting the contract together. But the answer is true. The answer is true. The School Ethics Commission says, once you are at that point in the negotiations, and by the way, the member can actually vote on the final contract, once there's the MOA and the guide. Either if you're an NJA member in another school district, or if your spouse is an NJA in another district.
So they're not conflicted then?
They're conflicted up to that point. So they shouldn't be sitting in when the board is strategizing about how much they want to offer, what their proposals are going to look like, but once there's that MOA and guides, the board member can actually vote on the final contract. Yes.
Now, if they were a teacher here, they couldn't vote on it because they'd be voting on the real contract.
Yeah, although the law is, they couldn't be a teacher where they're a board member anyway. Yes. But if they had, but, but to piggyback on what you said, if they had a relative who worked in Mawa, they would be completely conflicted from beginning to end. How about this one? A board member violated Sections C and E. I can actually have these over there. C is on policymaking, planning, appraisal. E is recognizing your authority represents, with, lies with the board. So this board member starts emailing vendors falsely claiming she was reaching out on behalf of the board, requesting price quotes on Chromebooks. She contacted DA's from neighboring school district, doing a survey, getting their opinions about the Chromebooks. Is that a problem? The words of George Costanza, that was the answer that I'm going to sign those. That is a problem. That is private action. She was never authorized to start doing her own investigations, surveys, falsely representing to vendors, hey, I'm a board member, you know, would you be interested in submitting a proposal about Chromebooks and so forth? So, you get the point. A board member whose spouse is a member of the borough council violates Section C. Section C is from the prohibited act and it says, a board member shouldn't act in a manner where they have direct or indirect personal or financial involvement that could compromise your objectivity. So would a board member violate the conflict section if she were to vote on a shared services agreement between the board and the township to employ SRO? What do you think? Should she abstain from that?
That what do you think?
That was an advisory. So this person wrote to the School Ethics Commission, said, my husband's a council member, we have an MOA which is an agreement between the board and the council, should I abstain or refuse myself? What do you think? Would the board, true or false?
You should have tracked this, but I don't.
You're saying true. Then you'd be correct. That's, that's a truth. Board members should abstain, recuse, recuse him or herself and so forth.
But it's interesting, only that neither spouse has a financial, personal.
True. But I guess they felt, you know, something, your husband's a councilman, maybe a spouse. Thank you. It's the appearance of the pride. You're right. How about this one? This is, this is an interesting, one day you will. This is, this is a very interesting one. This is a hot-button topic, as you know, probably around the state. Section A deals with upholding all laws and rules of the state Board of Education, following the law. Section D is not administering the schools, and F is refusing to surrender your independent judgment to special interest groups. So a board member votes no, along with some other board members, to a motion approving the health and PE curriculum, resulting in a tie vote, resulting in the motion going down to flames. So they don't, kind of, they're left without this health and PE curriculum, they're out of compliance with the New Jersey student learning standards. Is that a true or false? And what do you think is false? False. The answer is false. And what the School Ethics Commission said was, you vote as board members. You have a right to vote your conscience. It's not a good thing that they were left out of compliance, but voting on a particular matter, generally, unless there's a conflict, of course, is not going to be an ethics violation because people would be in violation of the Ethics Act all the time if they voted no to certain things that they don't support. So that was not a violation.
Mark, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Being that this is mandated by the state, what's the district's action in order, because my obligation as superintendent is for us to be in compliance with state expectations?
Right.
I understand that that was something that, you know, a curriculum that wasn't, we weren't obligated to adhere to, which is hard to find one of those, too. But how do we, how do we work as a district to make sure, because my responsibility is to make sure that the district is in compliance with all expectations. How do you do that?
Yeah, I mean, I think what they have to do is go back and revisit why they, the board members didn't support it. Perhaps it could be tweaked in such a way to still be compliant with the state and try again. They never get to that issue in this case. And, you know, you spoke about this earlier, not having this curriculum could put you in jeopardy, and keeps that with you, for instance. So, the board is caught between a rock and a hard place, which is why I personally don't think the board members should really be voting on things that are mandated, there's not really a lot of discretion anyway. And I think they had problems with certain parts of the curriculum, and they probably, hopefully, went back, tried, and tweaked it so that they got the support that they needed. But ultimately, yeah, not a, not a tax violation. All right, final question. A board member who's employed in another district is a bus driver. So we've got a board member who works in another district as a bus driver, but, you know, you don't have to be in the union if you don't want to. You don't have to pay the dues, but keep in mind, irrespective of whether you pay the dues, the terms and conditions of your employment are still governed by the union contract. So, here we've got a board member who's employed in another district as a bus driver, true or false? Is that person precluded from being involved in all acts of the negotiations with the bus drivers in the district where the board member sits as a board member in that particular situation? If the board member's not technically in the NJA in the district where they work? What do you think?
True. So they're employed by another district but not a member of the NJA in the district, and they're on the board?
And so they're at the board on, they're on the Mawa board hypothetically, and now can they participate in the Mawa bus drivers' negotiations?
So they're not conflicted because they're not a member of the association?
So you think it's a false?
It's a true. Well, no, it is non dues-paying member, so he's still a member.
He's, he's, his employment is still governed by the union contract, which is negotiated by the NJA, but he's not a member of the union. So that means, for instance, he doesn't have a right to be represented in agreements, he doesn't have the NJA attorney representing him or half of his issues. So, it's optional whether employees in a school district have to be, they don't have to be in the union. Their contract, their, their employment is still governed by that union contract, but they don't actually have to be dues-paying members. And some people are not members of the union. So, the question is, is the fact that he's not technically an NJA member, is that precluded from being involved in the negotiations in his own district where he's a board member with the bus drivers? What do you think? The answer is, it was true, he was precluded. And the reason was, because even though you're not actually in the union, your contract is negotiated by the NJA anyway, their collective bargaining. You get all the benefits of that collective bargaining agreement, even though you're not in the union, and they felt it was a conflict of interest.
But you're, you know, you're in a different district.
Maybe you're in another district. Yep, yep. Some of these are really tricky, you know. So that was, that was that. So, does anybody have any questions, thoughts?
How do we get on the School Ethics Commission? So we change these answers?
It's funny, and I probably shouldn't say this, when I, when I prepare this quiz and I look at the decisions through the School Ethics Commission, and I don't know if you get it, Strauss asks me a newsletter every month? Most of the cases that are filed against board members are dismissed. Most of them are dismissed. Most of them don't satisfy the board's approval, believe it or not. And so that's not to say you should act unethically, of course, but, I mean, a lot of people, as you know, file these ethics charges because they have vendettas against other people and so forth, and a lot of them are frivolous. So, so that's it. Any questions? Well, thank you. Thank you, Mark. My pleasure, Mark.
Okay. Yeah. Working on your reports. Just a good question. All right. Do you have a report for Trista? For our community relations? We had our first meeting, last week? Yeah, something like that, last week. Kick off the year, just going over some of our goals for the year, and some of the big things and mysteries that we will be talking about at some point. But in the meantime, we talked about the new website, the redesigned website, well-done by administration and everyone involved. It's really sharp-looking. I think the information is, is well-laid out and in good places, especially the calendar, which everyone seems to be looking for lately, every time notification goes out. It is going to take Google a little while to re-up its search engine algorithm to know where to point to the different things, so we type in "school calendar," it doesn't take you there yet, but it will eventually. But it looks really good, so, well done. We also talked about starting a community roundtable called T-Bird Talks. Basically, cough, you have the superintendent under a different name.
Andy Sincere.
Oh, yeah, Andy Sincere, sorry. You're going, too. Maybe some board members. Looking to start those, hopefully, February, March. More to come on that, so. That was our first meeting. Obviously, from a community relations standpoint, we'll be looking to, you know, just have more for the community and be more transparent, and have more information for the community at large as we go along through the years. Look forward to it. Thanks.
Just a couple, real quick, transportation, we're having our first meeting on Monday. I wanted to thank Kyle and Tracy, they sat with me for about an hour the other day and brought me back up to speed as to what we did last year and what we're going to do this year. So, thank you. We didn't do it before you. Start over. Talk to you, we'll talk about that next week. Anyone else? Fantastic, I'm going to move along before that. Thank you, Mark.
Good night, everybody. Take care, see you. Thanks.
Board member remarks, additional comments on other non-technical items?
I just have a real quick question, Dr. Toro. Is there any update on the calendar for the 24th, 25th?
Yes, we're, we're developing that calendar. We shared the calendar with the Executive Committee yesterday, and we also are working with our MEA administrative team. We're going to be sharing it also with the, which has been a practice prior to me, the Executive Committee of our HSOs, and we are hoping to have it on the February 15th agenda for board approval or vote.
Anyone else?
Yeah, so I had a very interesting experience. So, on January 9th, I had the pleasure of attending the statement of state address delivered by Governor Murphy. And so one of the, the more shocking initiatives that he rolled out was his interest in allowing sixteen and seventeen-year-olds to participate in the voting process. And personally, I do disagree with that, the governor's initiative, but I also see that as an opportunity for Mawa. So I do believe that sixteen-year-olds, that maybe you're not mature enough, politically active enough, but I think as a board, we should come together, because whether we agree with it or not, this is initiative that's likely going to pass. So I think, as a board, we should come together and try to strategize, hey, how should we revamp our civics education in the schools, so Mawa will be prepared come time, whenever this initiative gets passed. We're going to have the most prepared students, the most active students, the students that want to participate in the voting process.
Chris, is this for local elections, state elections?
Oh, yeah, let me clarify. So, the governor did say, it's, we're going to start out, or he wants to start out with local elections, so specifically Board of Education, but I don't see that ending at just the Board of Education level. I do see that in a certain timeframe, whatever it is, having access to vote at town council, for county commissioners, other state-level spots.
So who doesn't want them to vote for?
Mr. Hughes, is there anything specific that you have a concern about, either at the middle school level or high school level, specific to our civics curriculum, that we need to strengthen?
Oh, no, I just thought it would be good to take a look at it and see, like, hey, is there a couple options that we could have a little more hands-on experience, have a little more instruction on local-level politics? Is there, how much instruction do you think, I know this is maybe like a broad question, but how much instruction is done on the local level of, of governance?
I, I think a good resource to get clarification on that would either be Mr. Corey or Mr. Pascal, as well as Ms. Van Ness. And Ms. Van Ness could, can provide you with the different touchpoints throughout the, at the very least, the 612 curriculum, that talk about not only local-level government, but state-level and the national level, along lines of civic, civics and the education within that. So, they're, I, I believe how they'll be able to shine a light on all the different opportunities, and then, if further discussion is needed, we can speak to the specifics. That's why I was asking if there's anything that, that comes to mind, that, that is of concern. But they can definitely share that, that information with you.
I appreciate it.
It's an interesting thing, you know, we, it's something that would be kind of a sea change, right? I mean, to be able to prepare our kids for that, you know, for that, that responsibility, really, it's an interesting work.
Yeah, aligned to the current curriculum, I know that Mr. Pascal works with the county along the lines of getting the students who are of age registered to vote as well at the school level, to make sure that we're taking away any sort of obstacles for participation, but obviously, that's the end of the experience.
Right.
But also the touchpoints in between of having awareness of what is your role and responsibility, and then the ramifications of whatever may be.
Right, yeah, what is, what does it mean, and what's actually happening, what are you doing, what are the ramifications of this? Basically, you know, preparing, getting them registered, you know, that should be the end of the process.
Well, in the new website, if you go to the High School Student Services, there's a voter registration section, and it's a wealth of resources, not just to register, but the whole process of voting and why it's important to do it. One of the opportunities I think we could add to that, though, is that the county elect for elections is looking for students can help out, they're, they're very short of poll workers. So I think you could be as young as six, I mean, don't quote me, but I think you could be as young as sixteen to work as a, as a poll worker, because that would be something.
Seventeen?
No, there's another update, too, that they voted in. If you're seventeen and you're eligible to register, you can vote in the primaries, not to new laws, during two years from now. So it's something to update, because as we had voter registration at the high school available, to encourage students, to let them know that they can participate in the primary. So it's two years from now, it'll come into action.
So would you even get on?
Engagement.
Having, having that on the website is cool, with all that information. My kids are, they're already.
It's a lot of detail right there.
I would add it because I was just, just breezy. And that should be in the classroom, for sure.
It's 2026.
I think it is. Yeah, I'm not saying that it's not, but you know, with that, with that change. Anyone else?
Yep. Just shout out to Courtney Corolla and our foreign language teachers, who pulled off a fantastic international night last Thursday. It was packed. I got there at seven, there was lots and lots of people there. The entire cafeteria in the high school was ringed by displays and food, and not just of languages we teach. So there was a person doing Japanese calligraphy, there was an Islamic community display, there was, there was a lot of stuff, a lot of people eating. There was a lot more food this year. I didn't come as hungry as I should have, but it was a fantastic night, and it just shows how wonderful our community is and all the people out there who wanna share their cultural backgrounds with the broader community, which is great. Just a calendar update. On February 1st, the Mawa High School Chamber Coffee House will be at seven o'clock in the media center at the high school, a boys' grade event, and Kurt, could you attend?
Sorry, Rick, one more thing. I had the pleasure of judging DECA, a DECA competition at Ramapo College. I think it was a couple weeks ago at this point, lost track. I wanted to thank Ms. Torino, Ms. Ferguson, for inviting me and asking me to do it, but also for preparing our students. If you've never sat through a DECA competition, this is unbelievably impressive. These students are given scenarios, and they have to come off, basically off the top of their head with responses to these scenarios. And some of the students, I didn't see any Mawa students, I think it kept us, kept them away from the Mawa judges, or from me, I don't know. But the kids that came in, the students that came in, they were incredible, incredibly prepared, just really just impressive, impressive kids. So I encourage all of us to reach out to Ms. Torino, Ms. Ferguson, to express some interest to do this. They're always looking for judges. They're also always looking for help in preparing the kids. They'll have mock kind of competitions in the high school. I sat through that as well. So please reach out to them, offer to help. It's very rewarding. I'm not gonna be able to go to Olympic City this year, but I went last year for it, and that was just even, that was states. We had two students, I think, went to Florida for Nationals. So that was, it's a really cool program, and I hope more students enroll. And we have a big number. It was like seventy-five or something?
Yeah, and this year Nationals, I think, is in California.
California, yeah. I think it was like seventy-five students at Ramapo College, I think, from Mawa. So it was really cool.
That's great.
Can I have a motion on mitts from last meeting? Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
Abstain.
Mr. Copeland.
Abstain.
And Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Still don't go on. Never adjourn. New business eighteen A through U excluding eighteen R, which has been tabled. We have a motion, Mr. Kazmarski, second by Mr. Gallo, Mr. Bleeker.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Jansen.
Yes.
Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
And Mr. De Silva.
Yes. New business A through O may have a motion on personalities. Ms. Jansen, second by Mr. Copeland, Mr. Bleeker.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.[1627.81]